I'd like to call the, what is today? The Tuesday, April 3 city council meeting to order. Madam City Clerk, would you call the roll please?
Mayor Kristi Malchow.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Tom Hornish.
Present.
Councilmember Karen Moran.
Present.
Member Jason Ritchie.
Present.
Councilmember Chris Ross.
Present.
Councilmember Pamela Stewart.
Present.
Councilmember Ramiro Valderrama.
Here.
Okay, Councilmember Stewart, would you lead us in the pledge please?
Certainly.
No scouts?
It's moved over here. Would you like to ask the scouts to do it?
Keep track of that flag.
Okay.
Unless the scouts, do the scouts want to come up?
Do you want to post the colors?
All right. We put them on the spot.
There's a whole procedure I set it up.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Thank you. Thank you guys.
Thank you gentlemen.
Entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Thank you, it's been moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor of the agenda say aye.
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 Opposed? I do actually need to get a motion for a few items here. We have a resolution that's sitting on your desk that came in a bit late that we need to tuck under new business.
So moved.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of putting the resolution which is, read it really quick for the audience's benefit, sponsoring Sammish Plateau Water and Sewer District requests to join the AWC Employee Benefit Trust, we'll put that under new business, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, by a vote of seven zero, we will put that under new business. I'd also entertain a motion to move the 410 study session to May 1st.
You have, not all of the, we are on, I don't know, our LED lights aren't working, not all of the items Mayor Malchow will move to May 1st, so we would technically just be canceling the April 10th study session.
A question for the deputy city manager, did you confirm with each council member to see that we would not have a quorum April 10th?
It sounds to me like you do have a quorum, but you only have three people here in person, and I understood there was a concern about the items scheduled for that evening and whether or not the council will be able to have effective discussion with potentially two people remote on the phone, three here and two, it sounds like two may be fully absent.
The YMCA property is one of those, and the detour discussions surrounding Isqwa Falls City Road, and there was one other I might recall.
When the YMCA property in one of the discussions, because we had a special session called, and the majority of the council was actually outside of Sammish, I was in California at time, we were all calling in and we were able to do it on that session, so I would not be opposed to holding that session if, because of the pressure of the agendas to continue going forward.
Jesse, was there a problem moving that stuff to the following meeting? There is, April 17th is very full, so you have three items scheduled for your April 10th study session, a report from Eastside Fire and Rescue which includes an update on the EMS levy, we also will be discussing the YMCA property, and then Isqwa Falls City Road detour plan. We can't move all of those to April 17th, the calendar is just too full, but we did, we figured if you made the decision tonight to cancel the meeting, we would move those items to two or three weeks out. And it's really the council's pleasure whether or not you desire to cancel that meeting.
So I think I was one of the ones that expressed concern with not being present for it considering the subject matter, but obviously up to the full council, I just prefer, those are pretty meaty topics with a lot of interest, and it's really hard, even if you're participating remotely, to fully capture stuff, it's hard to hear, you can't see, even if you're watching the streaming, the streaming is delayed, so.
Now you have no second.
So what's on the table, guys?
There's a motion.
Second.
No, there's not a second.
Let's hear the motion again.
The motion was to cancel the 410 study session.
And to move it to the following week.
No.
No, no.
No.
No, it's just to cancel it, and then Jesse said the subject matter would be picked up on the first, May 1st.
Most of it.
Most, two.
Then two to three council meetings, we would work to reschedule those items, I can't move them all to just one meeting.
I'd like to keep where it is, I'll be calling in, it's fine by me.
I'd like to keep it. So we have no second, so the motion fails.
Well, I can second it, because who made the motion?
I did.
Karen did, so I can second it. So it's been moved and seconded.
Okay.
So, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Can we get a show of hands? Obviously, for aye.
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 My hand's raised.
To cancel it.
Versus keeping it because of the schedule being so full and doing it.
And then those opposed? Okay, so it will stay on. Then I would entertain a motion for, there is a 79 study session, Jesse, you may have to jog my memory here, my notes say 79 study session, and change the 710 to a special meeting.
This is a July request, so you would be canceling the July 2 study session, canceling the July 3 regular meeting, adding a study session on Monday, July 9, and changing the Tuesday, July 10 meeting to a special meeting.
Instead of a study session. Yep. I need a motion if we're going to do it.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
By a vote of seven zero, oh, sorry.
I'm here that week, so I guess that's how we're voting now.
By a vote of six one, then we will cancel the 72 and 73 meetings, and 79 will become a study session, 710 a special meeting. Okay, and just for the council's edification, I do have my city phone up here, because Deputy Mayor Hornish is on the phone, if he needs to chime in on subject matter, that's why I have this up here, so I know that he is communicating with me, and I think he actually had something to communicate right now, so, Deputy Mayor Hornish?
Yes, I do. Hopefully you can hear me?
Yes.
All right. I have been presented with a professional opportunity that I cannot pass up. Unfortunately, it's going to require me to travel, and it's going to preclude me from continuing to devote as much time to city council in Sammish as I have in the recent past.
I'm sorry, it's hard to hear you, Tom.
I'm sorry, maybe I'll put the mic down and I'll hold it up, can you hear me better now?
Little.
We can hear you.
Hang on. Okay, so I've got an opportunity that I can't pass up, it requires me to travel and I cannot continue to devote as much time as I have in the recent past to my duties here in city council, and as such, I need to step down as deputy mayor and off the committees except for the governance committee that is ad hoc and should be limited, I hope. I will remain on council, I will remain to have property, owned property in Sammish, I will continue to pay my Washington, King County, Sammish taxes, and my family will continue to live in Sammish, and I will be in Sammish a significant amount of time on and off during the weeks, but as such, the duties and the time I can commit to this role has to be diminished for me to take on this opportunity. As such, I guess I'll open it up if anybody has any questions, but the meat of this discussion is that I need to step down as deputy of the role and off the committees except for governance.
Councilmember Valderrama?
Yeah, Tom, as you know, I put a call, I'm trying to estimate, how much of the work week will you be gone?
It's still up in the air, my plan and expectations is that I can work and travel three days a week, I don't know what days of the week that will be, but it's still kind of in flux, so I can't really answer with specificity right now.
So you would be here three days a week, or there three days a week?
I'll be traveling three days a week.
You'll be back two days a week.
He also said he'd be traveling three days, so he'd be here four days.
Four days here, two days there, okay.
Three days. Three. Three days of travel.
You got it.
All right, keep it straight.
Away this many.
That all? Councilmember Moran.
Tom, I want to thank you because you've done an amazing job, and I want to thank you for being willing to stay on, so since you're still living in the city and so are your family, we know you're coming back, and we hope that we can take as much time as we can, we'll take anything you can give us.
Appreciate that.
Ramiro, you have your button on again?
Yeah, I did.
Everyone's buttons are on at this point.
Chris has his finger on, so I don't know, are you going to answer the question?
Councilmember Ritchie.
Yes, thank you, is there precedent for council members staying on the council but not being able to fulfill all the responsibilities such as committee membership, meeting attendance, that kind of thing, is there, I mean, in-person meeting attendance, I don't know as far as Tom's schedule is going to be as far as being able to be in town for meetings or not being on committees, I mean, is there precedent for that, has that happened before, and what was the experience from the council?
Tom, maybe you want to comment on whether you're, my understanding was you're going to physically be present, is that true? I mean, you're, it's spring break, which is why you're not here right now.
Right now, yeah, well, just for the next, for April as I'm getting my feet on the ground in this new position, April is going to be a tougher month on my travel, but after April I expect to then pull it back to where it's four days in Sammish and three days traveling, so I should be here four days, but again, that doesn't mean I'll be here every Tuesday and Monday either, because the three days of travel may have to move back and forth, I just don't know yet, so it's a little bit in flux.
Matt, I was going to say, I appreciate Councilmember Hornish's, Deputy Mayor Hornish's involvement on the council, I think he's been invaluable, I talked to him about last night, I certainly appreciate the amount of information I've been able to glean from him in the past few months, I just am concerned about the schedule we have in front of us, the budget, the master plans we have to work with, the committee assignments we have, and how that's all going to roll down to the rest of the council members, and, you know, like in Tom aside, I think we should just try to have a frank conversation about what that means as far as the future membership of council members and what the expectations are.
All right, I know we've got people going on round two here, but I need to go to council members that haven't had a chance to speak yet, so Councilmember Ross.
Yeah, Tom, congratulations, number one, on this opportunity, and we should give council members like Tom Hornish an opportunity to serve the community, he is one of the hardest working council members I have seen and witnessed since I've been on this bench, and I don't call it a reduce duties per se or not fulfilling council duties, I think he exceeds expectations on his core involvement, and then he's staying on one committee at least, which is helpful, the governance, and I for one want to keep some of his capability, experience that's sorely needed on this council, and give him all the support needed to continue his tenacious work for this city, and so I will, and I hope others will join me in taking some of that committee overflow so that we can have some talent like Tom on the council for the time forward.
Councilmember Stewart.
Mayor, you just mentioned that being remote can be challenging, so if that's going to be a recurring thing, how will we help, I mean, if council, or if Deputy Mayor Hornish is going to stay on, how will we solve for that if being remote is hard to hear, streaming is delayed, and sometimes seeing the presentations is not possible?
Well, I think I just heard him say though that it's only April, that he plans to be present, physically present for meetings with the exception of April.
Actually, I heard him say that his travel schedule will rotate, so he might, may or may not be here on a regular basis for the meetings.
Yeah, I think Pam, you've got it more correct, it's not that I can commit to be here in Sammish physically for all meetings, in April, I can tell you I cannot, but after that, it's in flux and up in the air, and I really don't know yet.
Councilmember Valderrama?
Going back to the position that Councilmember Ritchie had raised, for discussions, we should talk about how this could work, because we have precedence in our city on both of these situations, there was the situation, and what was it, 2003 of Troy Romero, and in the case of Troy.
Point of order, that is not.
Hold on a second, there is no point of order here.
It is a point of order.
No, there is no point of order.
Point of order.
Please let me finish before I interrupt.
We do not have legal standing at all to do anything but help on how we assist him.
No, that's all, this is a discussion right now, thank you very much.
Councilmember Valderrama has the floor.
Yes, so in the case of Troy Romero in 2003, Troy Romero spent the majority of his time in the city, Troy Romero did not miss any meetings, in fact, I spoke to Troy Romero today on this issue.
Sorry, Mayor, could you ask the council members to be quiet, it's distracting?
Thank you, yes, council, I would kindly ask that you give your attention to Councilmember Valderrama's comments, thank you.
So Troy Romero was at every meeting, and still, actually, it was the pressure started to go, and then he had a house in California, but apparently, from what I've heard from city and from him, is he was a legal resident here, but the city didn't feel he was able to still fulfill his responsibilities with those other days in California, despite that he was still here for the council meetings and didn't miss any, so there is a precedent in this issue, there is also a precedent on committees where John Curley didn't want to serve on committees, and at that time, that council and the following council said that we didn't want to go through that because the burden of taking the committees amongst the other members was on it, I also applaud Tom Hornish, and actually, he's the one who I'm closest aligned to day to day, so I applaud Tom for all his work, but I don't know how you then do it if you're not going to do the committees and you're going to be regularly missing meetings, given those precedents, that's something we need to talk through and discuss and understand, because we do have two standing practices from the city's perspective to look through and discuss, as much as we like them and want to keep them on, and right now, for him to say, okay, I'm going to only stay on one committee, that is an onus, and I don't know about the others, but I can't take any more committees on, and this is what was discussed previously when we've come through this issue, so I think this requires a robust discussion by this council.
I'd like to hear from our city attorney based on what Councilmember Valderrama has just stated about precedence.
Well, let me help, hopefully help to put some brackets around the conversation. First of all, as Tom has described his situation, he is still unquestionably a legal resident of the city of Sammish, so he is not by any means required to give up his office due to this new opportunity as a legal matter, I think Ramiro raises an appropriate question for discussion, and that's the division of labor among the rest of the council members. Troy Romero was sort of before my time, I mean, I know that he was working in Southern California and coming back and forth as well, and, you know, John Curley, I know when he stepped off the committees, there was some friction on the council because of the workload there, but that's really an issue for council to discuss among yourselves, and certainly for Deputy Mayor Hornish to chime in on here, I think it's fair to say, no one, including Tom, at this point knows how it's going to work, because he hasn't started yet, and some trial period may well make some sense for all of you, but then ultimately, you'll have to decide with Tom's input how the division of labor is working.
I think, I haven't made any comments yet, so I want to give my two cents in, which is that I'd rather give this a go and see how it goes, I think the deputy mayor's role on this council has been invaluable, and so I'm willing to step up and take on additional roles if needed to try and make it work, and then if it doesn't work, and the balance feels too out of whack, or if we're finding that he's not physically present for meetings, then I think we come back and have another discussion about it, but I would rather see us give this a go. Councilmember Ritchie.
Thank you, I'd like to ask, and I'm not sure of the process, because this has not happened before, that Councilmember Moran cease with vulgar and threatening language just because we are bringing up points that, according to the city attorney, are valid. I support giving this an effort, I think it's valid to talk about the process and the weight that that puts on fellow council members, and that's certainly not worthy of the kind of words that came out of Councilmember Moran's mouth when Councilmember Valderrama was just speaking.
The council will refrain from using vulgar language at the dais, please. Councilmember Moran.
My apologies. Troy Romero is actually a friend of mine, still is a very good friend of mine, who I'd love to get on the phone.
He's here, in city.
Oh, good.
I spoke to him today.
Great. Good, that's good news, actually, and so the comparison to Troy's case is very, very different, so, because there is no comparison, so I'm offended by that comparison, so the comparison that you're trying to make is that Troy didn't live here, he had a house and lived in California, he lived there, he spent his time there, and he came up here a couple of days a week for business, that is not what is happening here, and so to make that comparison is not reasonable, and so if I came across wrong, I apologize.
Councilmember Valderrama?
Your friend Troy Romero believes there is an appropriate comparison, today when I spoke with him, he actually said he spent the majority of his time here, he did have a residence in California, and he was a legal resident here at the time, but he did not miss any council meetings or the committee meetings, so I think that's where, what we're trying to look at is nothing against Troy Romero, nothing against Tom, I think Tom does a great job, it's what's going to happen with all that work, and can you function, and can we function with the extra work that's coming down on us, on that end, I would suggest if you wanted, but go out, you can ask and poll the other council members at that time in their emotion as to how effective can you be, but I think the biggest thing is going to be, can Tom sustain the burden of working as we go forward, my concern is right now, if we're going to give it a go, let him stay on those committees, and let's revisit this, rather than start dividing those committees up now, because once you start leaving the committees, I think you've given up a substantial portion of your work and role as a council member, thank you.
So our city attorney mentioned a former council member, John Curley, had stepped off committees, and that caused some friction within the council, but he stayed on the council through the end of his term, did he not?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, I'm just getting clarification there.
And I am not intending to speak for the deputy mayor, but back when I was much younger and could fit better in a coach seat, I traveled by airplane on a nearly weekly basis, and that wore me out, and that's why I think if, give everybody 90 or 120 days, including Tom, to work, try this out, and Tom may be the one who's looking for some different results.
Exactly.
Tom has a comment that he'd like to make.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Mike, but I sat in cockpit, smaller cockpit a lot longer as a pilot, so. No, I, no, the comment I really wanted to make is, I'm not sure it's fair to say that, and I'm not even sure, the committee is something that we agreed as a body that was offloading council duties, I don't think there's a requirement that you serve as a committee member, it's because as a committee member, you're serving at the pleasure of council, and I'm going to still serve as council, we could do away with all the committees if we want to, we don't have to have committees, so there was nothing when we ran that said you're going to be on such and such a number of committees, and you're going to be doing deputy mayor duties and everything else, those are all things, additional duties, as we used to call in the military, that you volunteer for as a council member, but my point is valid, I don't know how this is going to work out yet, I think it would be best to kind of see how it does work out, and how tired I am as I've gotten older and sitting in that coach seat, so to speak, but as to the committees, I don't think it's fair to say you have to serve on committees as a council member.
Well, and clearly there's precedent for that if John Curley peeled off of all the committees but stayed on the council, so there is precedent for coming off of committees yet staying on a council.
There is, and there's precedent that the council said we weren't going to do that anymore.
Well, it was also a previous council.
That's correct, that's why I want the discussion.
We're having it, I, we're having it, I don't have any more comments up here, so.
But I had made a proposal, well, I made a proposal that can we delay the breaking of committees for a month and see how he's doing with that before dispersing all of the committees out to others.
I think he's saying he's not going to be able to stay on the committees, so I, Tom, did you have another comment, I don't want to put words in your mouth, or none?
No, no, but you understand and stated my position, I mean, I have a full-time position, as many of us do on the council, that it's become here in the last few months much more difficult to schedule committee meetings, I know anyhow, with full-time jobs, but I'm saying I just can't do that with this position and opportunity I have.
Councilmember Stewart.
I'd just like to comment, as someone who has a full-time job, while we have sometimes had to go one or two rounds on finding a time, at least for the committees that I served on, I serve on, we have not had a problem scheduling meetings, nor have I had a problem attending them, so I just want to make sure that it's clear to the public that people with a full-time job have not, not been serving on the committees and not been getting them scheduled, it just may take us a few extra emails to find a time that everyone can attend.
Councilmember Ritchie.
Thank you, I do believe committee membership and participation is a critical role in being on the city council in Sammish, I also think that it's reasonable to try to work with people's schedules. I'm very happy for Tom, I would like to see him stay on the council, so, having said that, I think that we need to try to figure out creative ways to make that happen, if possible, if 30, 60, 90 days down the road it's not possible, then we'll have a meeting of the minds, maybe it'll all come together, and maybe it won't, maybe it'll all work out real well, but I would think in the short term, as Tom's schedule's getting established, if there is a way to move committee schedules, committee meeting schedules, to be more focused on Tom's availability.
Exactly.
Rather than creating a precedent where, you know, I can't make the committee, I'm not going to serve on the committee, that's a very dangerous precedent going forward, no matter what the reason is.
I fully agree.
And I would hope that we can work with Tom's schedule and hear when he's available, and, you know, whether it's EFER or whatever it is, I think there are probably some that involve external organizations like EFER that may not work, and we may need to move those around, but the finance committee, you know, governance, whatever else we can, I think we should try to make those work, so we're saying at present that, in point of fact, being on the Sammish City Council does mean active participation on committees.
Councilmember Ross, oh, no, sorry, Stewart.
Yeah, I would agree, whatever precedents may have been set in the past, I'd like for us to set a different precedent, which is if you're going to be on council, it's kind of, you're kind of all in, and I would agree that, you know, let's see how we can work with Tom to make that happen, I think we've all been pretty amenable to each other's schedules to try to find times that work for everyone, we don't cater around any one person, we all kind of are grownups, and we figure out a time that everyone can attend, but I do think that being on council does require a certain level of commitment to those committees, those committees we have determined are necessary, given the volume of work that we have to do, and that we want the committees to be able to do the deep diving so that we aren't having to do that on the full council, and we don't have meetings going till 2:00 AM, I think it's critical that we have a full body of people on those committees, both the ones internal to council as well as the regional committees, the regional committees we're on are also critical, we, we're a city that has to function in a region, an ever-growing and ever-busy region, a lot of our traffic problems stem around the lack of transportation, right, so our ability to participate regionally with our growth management boards, with our transit committees, those are critical for us to be able to be a fully functioning city, so I'm happy to try to work with Tom and give it a trial period, but I do think we need council members who can stay on committees.
Okay, Deputy Mayor Hornish, you had a comment?
Yes, I want to make it clear, I am not going to serve on committees, I'm going back into the private practice of law that is a 16-hour-a-day job, I am willing to serve Mondays and Tuesdays on the council and on the governance committee, but I cannot continue to serve on the other committees, period.
but I cannot continue to serve on the other committees, period.
Are there any current regulations, codes, rules, precedents, beyond precedent, I guess, for the city attorney more than anybody else, that require membership on committees?
No, nothing in your currently adopted rules.
So, there's no rule that says Tom's not violating a rule by doing it this way? Is that the deal?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Valderrama.
Yeah, I'm concerned that it's now Monday and Tuesday that it's going to, as I understand, or if I recall, and I don't even know if this still exists, outside of the domicile requirement, there used to be a requirement for how many days that you're in the state to serve. Does that still exist?
No.
Okay. Because Councilmember Witten thought there was something that is, that existed from back then.
The only thing, there's a provision in state law that says an office is automatically forfeited if three consecutive regular meetings are missed without excuse. But other than malfeasance, misfeasance, recall, that's the only way to forfeit an office. Obviously, people can resign.
So, I don't have any more comments up here. And we have a deputy mayor that has stepped down from his position, which we now need to fill.
Well, there's two questions. The deputy mayor being fulfilled, as I understand, is one question, and I think that goes without saying. The second one, though, I think it's still, the question is the committee issue and being able to function without committees. And I don't know how we handle that now, where we go. I think Tom seemed pretty adamant that he will not do committees.
What he said.
And at the same time, we're hearing that we think it's an indispensable role. And so, I think we've got a little bit of a Gordian knot that we have to discuss through and figure out how we process that. And it may be longer than today to process that.
Councilmember Ross.
It's premature to reach conclusions today and make an assessment of Tom's involvement or lack thereof. I think he needs a chance, an opportunity to get his feet on the ground with his opportunity. And I know Tom well enough to know he'd be the first person to tell us that he cannot fulfill his level of contribution, which is, as I said earlier, pretty extreme. And I'm sure he's not going to let up. He talks about 16 hours a day, that's just his character. And losing talent like him and pushing talent out is not good practice. And he'll come back to us in the next 30 to 90 days. He'll say, hey, guys, I really can't give what I think is quality contribution to the city. And his, you know, he'll reassess himself. And so, it's not for us to decide whether he stays or goes. It really isn't. It really comes down to Tom, and Tom's got the integrity to make the right decision for the benefit of the city.
Councilmember Moran.
Councilmember Ross mentioned before that why don't we see who's willing to step up and help in these cases? Because wasn't there, I mean, I've been doing the alt for the EFNR anyway, and I told him I would cover that stuff. So, what is, what is left after?
He also serves for, I don't have it in front of me.
The Finance Committee?
Well, I'm thinking.
I have the list. Would you like me to read it?
Yes, please.
The Finance Committee, Eastside Fire and Rescue Board, the Eastside Fire and Rescue FAC, also known as the Eastside Fire and Rescue Finance Committee, the EMS Levy Advisory Task Force, and the Arch Board.
And Governance.
And Finance Committee, I think, Jesse, did you miss that one?
No, she got, she got that one.
She got that one? I missed it, okay. Well, she said Finance for EFER, but Finance Committee for Sammamish, too.
So, I think what I heard our city attorney say was that we can't take him off of our council. So, I'm hearing a little bit of those hints, and we don't have that ability to. Is that correct?
Let me try to make it as clear as again. The council has no authority to remove Tom from the council. The council can assign Tom to committees. Tom is not required to actually show up, right? And I'm not saying he would just willy-nilly blow it off, but he's expressed to you pretty clearly what he's willing to do and able to do at this point. Then, as I think Chris and others have said, this is probably something worth a later discussion. But again, my recommendation would be give, give everybody a little time to let this work out and see if it's working for Tom as well.
Councilmember Moran, do you still have your button on?
Yeah, Tom, I had a question on the EFNR. Is the EFNR and the FAC, if you're on one, are you the other? I mean, I know I'm alt for both. So, is one connected to the other?
In the past, they have not been, but the general practice and hope, and Romero, I'll defer to you, I think the expectation is that the board member, one of the board members of EFER will be sitting on the individual partners.
That's correct. That board or council member be sitting on the FAC, that's correct.
Does that person have to be, council member have to be a member, or can they be an alternate and be on the FAC?
I think they need to be on the board.
You can't be the alternate, but you could be the board. However, here we're talking about movements of them. However, EFER has a peculiarity, and so Karen Moran, Councilmember Moran, is the alternate. The problem is one now on the board, and I spoke with Councilmember Hornish about this, is that one of our biggest issues is dealing with the PFOS, with Issaquah. And on those issues particularly, and they've been adamant, there's now more tension, we have talked at our retreat that she would recuse herself from those discussions. And as of our last meeting, Issaquah was saying that if the Sewer and Water District continues with their behavior, they're going to, in some issues and misunderstandings, they're going to start loitering up, so.
No, if I ended up on the board, then I would end up immediately having to remove myself from the Water and Sewer District.
That's correct. But since that's the issue that's constantly being brought up.
I just said I would resign immediately from the Water and Sewer District.
Okay, but for the board, for EFER, it's on our agenda every meeting.
I just said I would resign immediately from the Water and Sewer District, so there would be no conflict.
Okay. If, yeah, that's a good, that would remove that conflict of interest.
There's also the possibility of someone else serving on EFER.
Well, that's the other where I was going, because I thought that she could continue as an alternate, but have someone else serve on the board would be another alternative.
That will be for the council.
Just in for consideration, either one could work.
Yeah. Councilmember Valderrama, did you have another comment or no?
Yeah, I was hoping that on the Monday and Tuesday, we could accommodate Tom, but I'm, I'm sorry, see, that's not going to be possible, so.
So, I don't, I don't have any more buttons.
I guess I have a question. So, does that mean we need to do the reassignment of all of those committees now, I would assume?
If he is stepping off of those committees, I would say yes.
Okay.
Assuming that we take those committees, otherwise they, or vacant, those seats.
Wow. That seems like a miss for the council to leave them vacant.
Yeah.
Although I, let me weigh in here, there's nothing wrong with a committee of two, either.
The external ones would have to be filled.
The external ones would, that's a fair point.
And Tom, is there a reason you can do the government's one, not the others?
Councilmember Valderrama, you need, yeah, thank you. Councilmember Ritchie.
To Councilmember Ross's point, I think it's prudent at this point to take a deep breath before we start reassigning committees and see how this whole thing pans out. And I don't hear anybody, not one voice on this board, saying they want Tom to go.
Exactly.
So, let's dispel that misconception. The question is, I think at hand is, what is the workload, which I think was my original point, you know, when this whole thing started. So, I would love to be able to just move on from here, not move committee assignments, and let's wish Tom well and get on with our agenda.
I'm going to step in here for just a second, which is, I think we would be doing ourselves a disservice as a council if we do not reassign those committees tonight. Having heard the deputy mayor say he's not going to be serving on them, we have responsibilities for this EMS levy where we have a seat at the table and a vote, we need someone there. And if we already know he's not going to be there, we need to have someone there. Same thing with, with EFER and the FAC and the Arch Board. So, I am very concerned about those regional committees not being filled and then just not having someone show up, because we decided not to fill them. Councilmember Valderrama.
Yeah, again, that shows the criticality of the committees on regional as well as it. Tom's willing to serve on the Governance Committee, so I think we should give it some time and allow it to go. On the EFER, at least for the moment, unless the issue, Councilmember Moran has said she can serve, and then let's digest it as Councilmember Ross has and revisit it. I'm more in favor of that than right now wholesaling out those roles.
Councilmember Ross.
I think the point Mayor Malchow raised, and I concur, is Deputy Mayor Hornish has stated, I'm not going to do anything but the Governance Committee. That means we have committees to fill immediately. Waiting is not going to change that. So, I think what we really need to do tonight is see who can step up, fill those committees, start with the regionals, make sure those are covered. And if we have committees of two in the short run, that's, that's fine internally, as far as I'm concerned, on some of the committees. But let's assess where we need the resources and find out where those resources are tonight so we can move on and not kick the can and do this next week or three weeks from now.
Councilmember Ritchie.
Okay. Maybe I misunderstood, Chris. That's cool. I'm in, I think that makes sense. One way or the other, we need to move on. So, let's pick our regional committees, let's figure out what those are, and let's start assigning them. Let's move on. Sound good? What are the regional committees?
Hang on, I have one more comment here. Councilmember Stewart.
Actually, it, great lead-in, is, can we get some of the details? So, for each of the regional committees, it'd be great to understand when they meet, how often they meet.
Jesse emailed all of that stuff to you yesterday, is that right?
Is that?
So, if Jesse can maybe.
I typically don't pull up my email during meetings, because that's an OPMA violation, so.
Jesse, can you, can you give us the information on those committees?
Sure. The city's Finance Committee meets quarterly, or sometimes a little more frequently as needed. Meeting times are to be determined. The Eastside Fire and Rescue Board meets monthly on the second Thursday at 4:00. Not included in my email, I should note, there's oftentimes a prep meeting in advance with staff. The Eastside Fire and Rescue FAC Committee meets as needed. Generally, those are daytime meetings, from what I understand.
At noon.
At lunchtime, it sounds like. The EMS Levy Advisory Task Force, there are specific dates that I obtained from their website for upcoming meetings, April 26, July 31, October 16.
I'm sorry, can you slow down?
Yeah.
Sorry. April 26?
April 26, July 31, October 16. Those meetings generally take place from 1:00 to 3:00 o'clock at rotating locations. The Arch Board meets less frequently. I actually do not have those meeting times. I'm not sure, Tom, if you had any information on the Arch Board meetings?
No, they're pretty much ad hoc. There is one more, Jesse, under the EMS Levy Advisory Task Force, there are committees of that task force, and I was serving on the Finance Committee, if I remember, that's the right, correct name. So, in addition to these three meetings, as to the entire task force, there are subcommittees as well. And I think those meetings are quarterly as well. And I don't know off the top of my head when those meetings are, I apologize.
Councilmember Ritchie.
Are we stepping up for committees? Is that where we're at now?
No, I think what we need to do is actually fill the role of the deputy mayor.
Oh, okay.
And then we can fill the roles of his various committees.
Actually, let me jump back in real quick. The next Finance Committee for the EMS Levy Task Force is Thursday, April 19, at 1:00 p.m., I believe. And the other Finance Committees, subcommittees for the EMS Levy Task Force has not been scheduled for the rest of the year.
So, everyone should have had the voting procedures in front of them. So, I will now ask for nominations for deputy mayor. Councilmember Stewart.
I nominate Ramiro Valderrama, or Councilmember Valderrama.
Councilmember Ross.
I nominate Councilmember Moran.
Councilmember Ritchie.
I nominate Councilmember Ross.
Are there any more nominations? Okay, seeing none, the nominations are closed. Voting takes place in the order the nominations were made. So, first is Ramiro Valderrama, and I will ask for verbal as well as raising your hand. So, Tom, you'll have to kind of chime in here. So, all those in favor for Ramiro Valderrama?
Wait, so we have?
Go ahead, do you have a comment?
Well, I haven't expected it, but.
Do you want me to open it up for discussion?
No, let's just go for it. I was surprised, but let's go for it on the.
Surprised? Surprised?
To be nominated. I'm happy to be, but let's go.
Okay.
Let's roll.
All right. All those in favor of Councilmember Valderrama? Say aye and raise your hand, please. Okay, we have three. That is not a majority. We will move to the next person on the list for nominations, which is Karen Moran. All those in favor of Karen, say aye and raise your hand. Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, so that is, that is four. So, Karen Moran will serve as our deputy mayor. I don't think we need to rearrange seats, so. Okay, so, do we want to do all the council committees now? Or do we want to wait? We have public comment that we've kind of jumped in front of here. My concern is that we may have people in the audience that are waiting to give us public comment. So, at the pleasure of council.
Let's go public comment, this could take a while.
Okay.
And I want to hear Stephanie, and I want to hear all the other comments here.
Public comment, this is an opportunity for the public to address the council. Three-minute limit per person or five minutes of representing the official position of a recognized community organization. If you would like to show a video or PowerPoint, it must be submitted or emailed by 5:00 p.m. at the end of business day to the city clerk, Melanie Anderson, at manderson@smamish.us. Please be aware, council meetings are videotaped and available to the public. First on the list, I have Mark Cross.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, city council. It's nice to see the new assembled city council. It's discouraging to hear the workload phrase so often at the first meeting I'm attending with you. I wanted to speak tonight about the Eastlake-Sammamish Trail. I know that the city of Sammamish and the county have been going back and forth, both in federal court and then with the Surface Transportation Board. In fact, hiring a firm in Washington, D.C., Slover and Loftus, to work on behalf of the city of Sammamish. Last Thursday, that Surface Transportation Board denied the request of the city of Sammamish. So, I guess having the Washington, D.C. lawyers didn't work that well. But in any event, this goes back to the idea of who can control stop signs at the crossings at two public streets on the trail. And it is important that that be handled well. The thing I wanted to suggest is because this is going to become a regional trail that's going to connect both to Marymore Park and to the sound transit, that we have to look at this not only as a recreational, take-your-kids biking kind of facility, but we do need to think of it as an actual transportation, serious transportation facility. The two crossings that we're talking about go into neighborhoods, and you have kids walking from those neighborhoods up the hill to the Eastlake-Sammamish Parkway to get on the bus in the morning. You're going to have people biking and walking along the trail, and you have obviously cars and delivery along there. Now, whether you prevail and are able to make it so that the bikes and pedestrians stop, or whether the county prevails and is able to make the car stop every time, I think that both of those intersections would benefit from having overhead street lighting to illuminate it so that everybody has better visibility. Whenever you have that many people coming together on bikes, cars, pedestrians, joggers, no matter which way the stop signs are oriented, you're going to have challenges. And illumination would help make that a better facility. There's also a neighborhood called Twin Furs there that possibly could use the same treatment. I know there's problems with gift-to-public funds, but perhaps you could work with that neighborhood to see if illuminating the trail where it crosses their entrance. neighborhood to see if illuminating the trail where it crosses their entrance also would be something that would help their children and would also help the trail be a safe transportation facility. I'll remind the council that after four years, the new council members, the light rail's going to be in testing mode in 2022 in Bellevue. And so we're really going to be very close to having that as a regional facility. The next phase would take it to Issaquah, and the trail's really going to connect the two. So I expect it to see a lot of access and a lot of activity in the future, and I hope that you can help make it a safe and great facility. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Augustina Iff.
Mayor Malchow, council members, my name is Augustina Iff, and I have been a resident of the city of Samamish for the past 10 years. I am honored to be here today to accept the Sexual Assault Awareness Month proclamation that I understand you will be reading later today, on behalf of KESARC, the King County Sexual Assault Resource Center, a nonprofit that serves citizens in King County, including, of course, Samamish. The services we offer are made possible in part by the funding provided by several cities in the county, and Samamish is one of them. For this, I want to express my most sincere gratitude. Thank you for your leadership and willingness to be loud about sexual assault. Be loud has been our motto for a long time. It started out as what sounded like a marginal call to speak out about a topic few people were willing to talk about and most shied away from. In the past year, with the advent of the Me Too movement, among other things, more and more people have become louder and louder about sexual violence. We are in a crucial time of awareness, and we cannot turn back. The city's willingness to proclaim April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month sends an important message to city residents and beyond. We can only end sexual violence when we all come together against it. I am a social worker, and I work as a mental health therapist at KESARC. Every day, I see the pain, the suffering, and the ugliness that sexual violence creates in the lives of people of every age, every social, ethnic, economic, and educational background. If any of us thought that sexual violence happens in other communities and that our own, with its high median income and outstanding high school graduation rates, is untouched by it, we would be utterly mistaken. I see this every day, living and working in this community. I also have the privilege of witnessing the resilience of the human spirit and the amazing recovery that survivors experience when given access to the right resources, which your funding makes available. We need to be vocal about sexual assault and any kind of gender-based violence. We need to call it out when we see it in any of its forms and keep perpetrators accountable. We need to keep being loud about this. This proclamation today is a step in the right direction. Thank you for standing with me, with King County Sexual Assault Research Center, and with every survivor envisioning a future without sexual violence. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, I have Maureen Santoni.
My name is Maureen Santoni. I live at 22828 Southeast Sixth Place here in Samamish. I'm sorry to have to be up here again, but it seems necessary to update you on our situation from two weeks ago. We were elated when you voted 7 to 0 to let the 10 projects being held up by the stormwater decisions to go ahead. Our relation was short-lived and has been yo-yoing ever since. First, we were told our project did not qualify for an exemption, but there are actually two routes to, and we do qualify for the second. Tomorrow, 115 pages are being submitted for stormwater adjustment. This is a small lot, less than a half acre. Our house is not a mansion. It will take up less than a third of the lot. We began the whole process long before the permit application was submitted last July. Actually, in June, our engineer met with the city engineer to go over what was needed to make sure everything was correct before turning it in in July. It was supposed to take two to three months to complete the process. We thought the house would be half-finished by now. Instead, it is month nine of waiting. In October, we were told the submittal was going fine. That turned around in December, and it has been going up and down since. We were at a meeting with two young city engineers this past Friday. They both had the codebooks with them, and at least twice, they said they're still trying to figure it out. We're not sure, and they couldn't find pages to confirm items. It was quite alarming. I was a teacher, and when new programs or requirements were discussed, you couldn't leave students in the lurch and say, "Maybe you'll graduate with that. We'll have to wait and see." You couldn't leave them not knowing, and this is where we are with the city now. The stormwater codes are complicated, and we're left in the unknown. We've lived in Samamish for almost 40 years. People are hearing about our situation, and we get calls. Just a few days ago, we got a call telling us to contact King County Senior Community Services to get help resolving this. We are not getting any younger, and we would like to enjoy this house. We also have been told to contact the Veterans Administration for help. Frank was a Navy pilot. We've been told also that the Seattle Times would be very interested in our plight. We don't want to go any of these routes. We just want to get it resolved. The stress of it all is unbearable. I'm also having trouble sleeping. You have one engineer that basically goes through these projects. There shouldn't be confusion or unknowns about what is required. At the meeting last Friday, while looking over pages and drawings, it was, "We need this. We don't need this anymore. We're not sure about that." There shouldn't be this confusion, and we're only one of the 10 projects. If there's any way you can help, we would appreciate it. Thank you.
Madam Mayor. Steve Lenishevsky, our Public Works Director, is in the back, and he would be happy to assist you this evening. He can leave you his business card.
Can the deputy city manager come back and report back to us, especially since we've passed this on the docket exemptions to go forward, to be looked at? It's of particular interest to the council.
I would be happy to follow up. I don't have any information tonight. Thank you.
Next, I have Stephanie Carlson.
I've got a PowerPoint. Hi, Stephanie Carlson, back again. 1603 223rd Avenue Southeast. I'll just wait here. Wait, could you take us to Slide 11, please? Oh, I have the clicker. Oh, yeah. Okay, so I'm here tonight to talk again about this proposed road connection that keeps coming up between 223rd Avenue Southeast. That's my house there, that little blue bubble. That's 223rd. And Lancaster Way, which is the top, the right part of that fork of the road that comes down, past Big Rock Park and down. So in the abstract, this looks like a great idea. Hey, let's put a road through here, okay? But we live there. We live there. There are houses there. There is the headwaters of Ebright Creek. It's an environmentally sensitive area. I don't know why this idea keeps coming up because it's not possible. We just went through a lengthy hearing process, fighting a developer who was trying to develop there. You know, what came out in the hearing is that the cul-de-sac at the end of Lancaster Way, the developer of the city were trying to argue that it's not a cul-de-sac. They got out the plat design for Lancaster Ridge from 1988 and said, "Oh, here it says it's a temporary turnaround. It's not a cul-de-sac. It is a temporary turnaround for an eventual through-road connection with 223rd Avenue." Okay, that was 30 years ago, 1988. Like, no one called the 520 Bridge the Temporary 520 Bridge because 50 years later, they were going to build a new one. Okay, I don't think we should consider this a temporary turnaround. For all intents and purposes, it's cul-de-sac. The through-connection, is the city trying to justify a through-connection because 30 years ago, they were going to plan a road here? Think about what Samamish was like 30 years ago, okay? What was 228th like? We've all heard stories about the general store and how people would go and hitch up their horses at the, you know, general store there, okay? Very different. I don't know why we're still looking at what was planned 30 years ago. It's a different time, different place. These are established neighborhoods now. You can drive down Lancaster Way. You can drive down 223rd. Our houses look onto the street. They face the street. It just doesn't make any sense that we're going to try and put a road through that's going to be an alternative to 228th, end up as an arterial. There's not even room to put a road through. I don't know why this keeps coming up. The developer's traffic engineer in the hearing, in some of the documentation, said there is nothing in either the 2015 Transportation Improvement Plan or the transportation element of the 2016-21 Comp Plan about a road connection. So it's nowhere in the plans. There's no budget for this road connection. Yet city staff keep saying, we had sworn testimony from city planner in the hearing that they could put this road through, that they would start this spring if this development got approved. I mean, who's paying for this road, right? Second thing, what came out, you know, Ebright Creek is right here. These are the headwaters of Ebright Creek, type F stream, requires 150 feet of setbacks. I don't know how you put a road through there. There's nowhere to put a road unless you're going to, you know, reduce those setbacks. So the city's not willing to do an environmental impact study. It's expensive, I get it, but if it's too expensive to do an environmental impact study, it's surely too expensive to put a road through. Second, cost, you know, who's going to pay for this? Whoever puts a road through is also responsible for sewer. Developers don't want to do it. The city doesn't want to do it. So why are we talking about a road? Also, the size of a road, let's just look. Let's just take a little stroll here. Okay, this is my end of 223rd. I've gone out and measured from my neighbor's white fence there across the paved road to about, there's a mailbox and then a fence, which is in the shadow. That's 40 feet. That's 40 feet wide. So I don't see how you put a road through there without, are we getting into eminent domain? Do we want more legal battles here? I don't understand how you're going to put a road through here. This is looking back up towards 20th. This is the widest, flattest part of the road. We've got a hill. We've got mature conifers, trees. Those would all come down if we had a road. Does that seem like good planning? Here's the gravel road. This is the gravel road with my little assistant. The gravel road is about 9, 10 feet wide. So the city was going to require the developer to build a right-of-way, 30-foot right-of-way. It would be 10 feet of this gravel road plus another 20 feet into this wetland, not because there was a road coming through anytime soon, but because they wanted to prepare for a road, build a right-of-way. And I don't understand, why would we take 20 feet of wetland, trees, all of that, cut it down to make a right-of-way when there's no plan for a road to go through? Keep talking about a road. Who's paying for it? Who's going to protect the environment? Ebright Creek. We all know this is an important stream. I'm just, I'm done with this. Shot across the bow. This is not happening. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Mary Victor.
Hello, my name is Mary Victor. I live at 408 208th Avenue Northeast in Samamish, and I should have a PowerPoint. So tonight, I'm going to share with you something I call an "I-study" because I do study, and I had a question. Does removing trees affect hydrology? So for my real job, and yes, I do have a real job, I had work, and I heard public testimony at a public hearing on water rights, wells, watersheds, and aquifers. It was at Helena, Montana, which is our capital. It was given by House Representative Carrie White, who's a Republican in Montana. He introduced himself as serving as the chairman for the last two sessions on the U.S. House Natural Resources Committee. He's also third term for the Environmental Quality Council and in legislature as well. This is what he looks like, so you can imagine me tonight with a mustache, with a slightly more resonant voice, and I'm going to be reading his words. Couple things he'd like to get on the record that he mentioned at the Environmental Quality Council. Smoke from the wildfires last year, lack of timber harvest, reduction in fuel reduction projects. And there was a study done by Diane Amber-Crombie from Sacramento Mountains. They did a thinning project on 3,000 acres. They had test water wells. They raised the water table from 95 feet below this land surface to 15 feet, which is an increase of 80 feet in the water table just by thinning trees. I think one thing we need to look at is the amount of trees and their consumption of water, as he concluded his public testimony. So I do know that 3,000 acres, if you do the math, it's slightly under five square miles. And I looked up the report online, and these photos are the before-thinning and after-thinning photos. And if you read the short report, it's only six to seven pages. It says that the tree roots on those big trees on the right, they reach about 75 to 120 feet, and just the junipers can even go 200 feet deep into the soils. And you'll notice these pictures, none of them are clear-cut or graded. So I looked up Carrie White, Montana, and his Facebook popped up, and it said, "Common Sense Solutions for Complex Problems." And it stuck in my head that he said, "Look at the amount of trees and their consumption of water." So in addition to doing the advocacy I do at council on top of my job, I'm looking in our city. So the map on the right is Samamish. I have gray shaded using King County iMap showing about 4.7 square mile area, so it's under five square miles. And that area, if you know where it is, you know that a lot of trees have been removed, clear-cut, graded, and I'm pretty sure that it has raised our groundwater. And I'm going to tell you that groundwater and cutting trees and removing them and planting them affects hydrology. So my request tonight is, as you look at stormwater in town center or anywhere around the city, trees are an integral part, and what you do or don't do with them in vegetation is very critical. It's a factor that you need to look all the way to the roots. And then, I didn't actually do the report, but I just have a page to hand out while the next speaker.
Thank you. Next, I have James Eastman.
James Eastman, 196 Avenue Northeast. I'm here to give a presentation on stormwater. No, just kidding. I had some comments tonight, but I'm going to save them for another day. Mary's presentation was awesome, and I really appreciate all the work you guys do, even though I probably don't agree with you all the time. And I get up here and I speak, and a lot of times, I can't bear to hear myself speak, and you guys have to listen to me every week. So you guys are doing great. You guys don't get paid. Thank you for all your work.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council? Seeing none, we'll close public comment. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
It's moved.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of the consent calendar, say aye.
Aye.
A vote? Okay, by a vote of 7 to 0. I assume we heard Tom there. Consent calendar passes.
Yeah.
Or delayed. Our next order of business is a presentation from the Public Works Department. Oh, wait, we need to circle back on the committees if we want to do that now. Does council want to do that now?
I'd rather leave that to the end so we can get rid of the council business first, and then we can.
Okay. Okay. We will wait on reassigning the committees then to the end, and we will move forward with that presentation for the Public Works Department report. Ms. Deputy City Manager.
Yes. I noticed our red lights on our microphones aren't working anymore, are they?
Nope. Just a one-night thing.
Dang it. This evening, I am pleased to introduce, that is not Steve Lenishevsky. That is.
Steve.
That is Maya Knox, our management analyst in the Public Works Department. I know Steve just stepped out for a moment, but he'll be joining us in a minute. Maya, go ahead and.
My name is Maya Knox, and I'm the analyst for the Public Works Department. Thank you. This evening, it's my pleasure to present to you the Public Works Department report. Tonight, we'll take a quick look back at 2017, and then we'll talk about some current and upcoming projects and activities in our three primary focus areas of transportation, stormwater, and development review. Since this is our first department report, for those of you who are newer to council, we've made it a point to sprinkle in some staff photos throughout to help familiarize with kind of who's doing what in the department. So before we get into the big projects that we're working on this year, I wanted to take this opportunity to review some key achievements and statistics from last year. This infographic hits on some high points for transportation-related capital projects and street maintenance. In 2017, we completed nine transportation and traffic capital projects, including the Sahalyway slope repair, the 212th Avenue Gap Project, ITS Phase 1, East Beaver Lake Drive Neighborhood Traffic Management Program, and asset inventory for pavement management, as well as our annual overlay guardrail concrete and curb ramp retrofit work. Our other accomplishments of 2017 include installing five flashing yellow arrow signals, overlaying more than seven miles of roads, updating more than 100 curb ramps for ADA compliance. Our traffic engineers also fielded 207 citizen action requests, which represents a more than 50% increase over the previous year's numbers. Our maintenance folks report using more than 300 tons of asphalt for patching to repair cracks and fill potholes. And finally, because of all the work that we do to maintain our transportation infrastructure, we're happy to report that over 70% of arterial streets are in good or better condition, with an average pavement rating condition of 83, which is higher than many of our neighbors.
Councilmember Valderrama.
Hey Maya, just a quick question, if you know, I don't know if, we constantly drive on our neighboring streets, and we see our streets are noticeably better as we drive across it. Do we have the percentage of Redmond or Issaquah or know by chance of their ratings of their roads in good or better condition?
You know, that's a metric that not every city tracks. I did take a look at the pavement rating index number, so ours is 83, and Redmond's is 77, I know Kirkland's is 65.4, if that gives you an idea.
Okay, thank you.
And is the 105 curb ramps, is that total, or was that done in 17?
In 2017.
Wow, that's impressive.
So moving on to stormwater and the development review side of things, we completed two stormwater capital projects in 2017. We did the Inglewood Hill Drainage Project and the East Lake Sammamish Lewis Thompson Culvert Maintenance. Our stormwater staff also inspected 426 public stormwater facilities such as ponds and vaults, and cleaned more than 4,000 catch basins throughout the city. Last year our engineers reviewed plan sets for almost 300 developments, including larger subdivisions, short plats, and single-family homes. And our inspectors processed nearly 400 right-of-way permits. Finally, our maintenance staff fielded 1,400 work orders, 175 of which were tree-related, and worked close to 2,500 hours of overtime. So that just gives you an idea of what went on last year. So moving forward to this year, 2018, here's a quick look at the transportation capital projects we've scheduled for this year. I put the construction times in blue, planning, design, pre-construction phases are in gray. I'll talk about each of these projects individually, but I thought it might be good to just put this up here for a quick overview. As you can see, construction for Southeast Fourth will start around the time that 212th wraps, which should be soon. And Lewis Thompson Hillside Repair will follow later in the year. So first up, status update for 212th Way, Snake Hill Repair. And there's Jim Gruber's face up there in the corner. He's project managing this, as you know. So curb ramps are set to go in early April, and paving end of April depending on weather. And we're anticipating that the road will be open to traffic in May. Up next, Southeast Fourth, street improvements. So just as a reminder, we're constructing a three-lane median roadway with bike lanes, planter strips, and sidewalk, and coordinating installation of upgraded utility with sand plat. Construction on this project is scheduled to begin in June. Please feel free, if you have any questions as well, to stop me. So here's Sam and Jed in the corner. They're working together to construct a wall, repair slope damage, and install a new storm drain below Lewis Thompson Hill Road at 210th Place, Southeast. The bid advertisement for this project is scheduled for the end of April, early May, with construction to start mid-August.
Maya, I have a quick question on this one. Because I run by it all the time. So, you know, after this, they put in a slight, a slight curb to prevent the water, if anything, was sheeting across, so it kind of runs down the curb there. And I know at one point I had alerted staff because the water was going over in another area, and they put some, some rocks there, which seemed to have helped, except for that I look at it every once in a while. I'm wondering if staff has taken a peek at it, and it looks like it's now, the water's kind of eroding the hill beyond where the rocks went. I just want to make sure we don't have another slide into ZACUS. Has staff taken a peek at that recently?
I'll defer that to Steve.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Citizens. Steve Lenashevsky, Public Works Director. Sorry for my tardiness. But yes, we are watching this, it's on the list. We do expect it to be repaired this year, so we'll make sure it's fixed.
So the, the area that's just burned down?
The asphalt that was burned up to guide the water off the face of the slope, that's moved, yeah.
Perfect. Thank you.
Next up we have Issaquah Falls City Road, which includes widening to four lanes and a new bridge between 247th and Kohani Drive and three roundabouts. Design is scheduled to be complete by the summer. The Issaquah Pine Lake Road Project includes an urban three-lane cross-section and construction of one or more roundabouts, repair. The design will begin this month with the contract authorization, and the first open house is scheduled for midsummer, and we're expecting to reach 30% design by September. So there is Ben Ressler up in the corner. He's doing concrete sidewalk repair, which is one of our annual reoccurring projects, which includes installation of 76 ramps for ADA compliance. Construction is scheduled to begin this month and will wrap up in July. The citywide overlay is another annual reoccurring project, which will include more than seven miles of overlay, particularly along a section of South 228th in the Inglewood Hill residential area, and along the northern section of East Lake Sammamish Parkway. And paving should start in mid-May. So next we'll look at what's coming up for traffic management and planning. We have several projects that will, we will be constructing this summer and into next year. That includes the East Lake Sammamish Parkway, Southeast 33rd Pedestrian Crosswalk, more flashing yellow arrow signals, and the 228th corridor intersection improvements. So a little bit of a more in-depth look at our upcoming traffic management projects with Stephen and Isabel up here in the corner. So we've got the 228th Intelligent Transportation System, or ITS Phase 2, design coming some, this summer. The aforementioned East Lake Sammamish Parkway, Southeast 33rd Pedestrian Crosswalk, construction will start this summer as well. And then we're constructing some minor intersection improvements along 228th, and we'll be installing eight flashing yellow arrow signals throughout the city.
Maya, do you know which intersections that you'll be installing those flashing yellows at already?
Nope.
Okay. Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, do we have any data yet on, so for the flashing yellow arrows that we've installed in terms of how they've helped? Because, I mean, personally I love them, but I just don't know if we have data to back that up, or if it just makes me feel good.
There hasn't been positive response. We don't have any fact data, there's anecdotal data that it is assisting, and it does vary by intersection on how long they are active and through what peak of the day or non-peak of the day and certain hours. But yes, I think everybody seems to be enjoying them.
Yes.
We, we did have a few cautionary messages on 228th and Inglewood Hill/Northeast 8th. Stephen and Isabel have made some adjustments. So it's been two months, and I haven't had a lot less with, or no comments back. So we had some concerns, but it has seemingly been mitigated on time of day that we do allow it. It is becoming more normal everywhere, right? The standard is flashing yellow, and we have a lot more signage, if you do notice, when you're in town versus out of town. We have a lot more distinct signage directing you to know that we have flashing yellow arrows. You can pull up to some intersections and it is just a, the yellow just flashes, right? With an arrow. So we try to advise as much as we can.
Will we have a, I mean, will it just be whenever we update our traffic data that we'll see any, to know if they're?
Those operational improvement metrics, yeah.
Yeah, to know if they're effective. Okay, thanks.
And then the eight flashing yellows to be installed, we did take note of the ones up, we talked about at the last meeting. So we haven't picked which ones are going up in what order yet.
Okay. Great.
So as always, we have our ongoing traffic management programs and activities, and those include managing and monitoring our transportation system. We also coordinate with schools, WashDOT, King County, Redmond, and police. We respond to citizen action requests, conducting annual traffic counts, and re-sripping pavement markings are all included in that category. So I'm sure you all are familiar with what's happening with the Transportation Master Plan and their share all up there, but I didn't want to leave it out of our update. So we're looking at June for adoption of the Transportation Improvement Plan, and late October for adoption of traffic to impact fees. Before we move off of stormwater, or to stormwater, here's a look at our streets maintenance team and some of the things that they'll be up to this summer. So we do have one vacant position, but let me see if I get this right. That's Dan, Waylon, Bud, Clinton, Kyler, Travis, and Colton up there on the screen. And they'll be doing grind and patch work in front of City Hall, also in front of East Sammamish Park, and at the entrance of Providence Point, among some other places in the city. So next up for stormwater, we have several projects under construction starting in May. I'll talk more about that in the next few slides, but you can see the construction schedule So as you know, our big stormwater construction project this year is Zacus Creek Fish Passage and Stream Restoration Project, which will include replacing an existing culvert under East Lake Sammamish Parkway and constructing 400 feet of improved stream channel upstream of that culvert. And there's Tony in the corner. Construction is planned for June through October and will include a full East Lake Sammamish closer for some, a few weeks during that time. Other big stormwater projects include the Zacus and Laughing Jacobs Basin plans, which will identify and prioritize capital and programmatic projects within each basin. CIP development for Zacus starts this summer, and we'll be hiring a consultant to begin work on the Laughing Jacobs Plan towards the end of the year. And that's Danica up there, and she's also working on the Sahawee Stormwater Tight Line, which will collect and convey groundwater seepage at the top of Sahawee Slope to reduce erosion. Bid advertisement for this is scheduled for this month, with construction starting in Also under construction this summer will be the East Lake Sammamish Parkway Ditch Maintenance Project, which will reestablish the ditch line along East Lake Sammamish Parkway from Inglewood Hill Road to the southern city limits. Construction is planned for June and July. So then also, as always, we have our ongoing, going stormwater activities and inspections. And that's Lisa, Jeff, and Chun in the top there. So those activities include overseeing storm system locates, monitoring water quality, doing stormwater education outreach, responding to citizen action requests, managing the city's NPDES permit, and inspecting stormwater ponds and facilities. So our stormwater maintenance crew is also getting ready for a busy summer, repairing and installing catch basins, ditching, and managing the beaver population. And up there is, again, Dan, Waylon, and then on the bottom, Joe, Jesse, Jordan, and Ryan. And we also have one vacant position right now. So last but not least, development review and construction inspection. We'll take a quick look at this team and see what they've been working on. So up there is Tom, Heim, Jim, Stephanie, and Robert, and they have been reviewing and inspecting development and construction activities for more than 135 new lots, including the King County Parking Lot and Trail, a rebuild of Margaret Mead and Discovery Elementary Schools, and a number of private subdivisions. And those are the locations throughout the city where they're located. So finally, didn't want to leave anybody out, because there's some other folks that don't have specific projects that they're working on, but here's a look at our current management and administrative staff. So the folks I haven't mentioned yet are Steve and Andrew, who you all know, and then Michelle and Paulette, our administrative assistants, and then myself. So Michelle, Paulette, and I support all of the work in the previous slides. We also do some other things as well. One of the things that I'm doing, for example, I recently started overseeing our solid waste and recycling contract with Republic. I'm also helping to initiate the city's Transition Plan Project for Compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act, and that's something that all departments will be working on in the coming year. So that concludes the Public Works Department report. Thank you for listening, and I'm happy to answer, or have Steve answer, any questions that you might have.
Councilmember Ross.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. I want to ask a little bit of follow-up question on the maintenance. A lot of work is going on with this team, and you mentioned 24, 29 overtime hours for maintenance. How many full-time equivalents are performing that overtime?
So you did see the difference between Streets and Storm, they're two different departments. So Dan, the superintendent oversees both groups. Waylon is our lead who does oversee both groups. We have some new positions built into the Storm rates over the next 10-year period, but we aren't filling that role, I think, for two years for a crew lead for Storm. So we have five in Streets and four in Storm, so that is nine. Is that the right math? And two vacancies, one in each.
So you're running 13% overtime right now, and your budget, so you have some vacancies, so you're compensating for some of the vacancy with overtime? So what would be your normal budgeted overtime?
I didn't bring the budget, but we do normally budget overtime in the operations funds. The auditor likes that we actually provide that, and we don't close our eyes and...
What range? 5%?
There's a fixed number, and I can get it between now and the end of the meeting if you want, but I can...
Trying to gauge our staffing and overtime, is this, it's compensating for staffing shortages, and how we balance this with the budgeted?
It's also keep in mind that overtime, these are the crews that are called out in emergencies, so snow and ice, and anything else that may happen. We had a, recently, an asphalt issue that had to be repaired, an emergency situation. So some of those things we just can't control.
Okay, yeah, Steve, we can get back together on that offline.
I don't see any more questions up here, but I will make one comment, which is, I really appreciate seeing the faces on the presentation. You know, we pass through the hallways, and sometimes, I mean, we know a lot of you, but we don't know others, so it's really nice to have a name, a job, and a face with us, so I really appreciate that part of it.
We're a face and a job.
And names too. Names nice.
Thank you.
Good, thanks.
Okay, we will move to our next agenda item, which is a presentation on the Organizational Development Department Report. Ms. Deputy City Manager.
So you're probably wondering, several of you have asked, do we have a Department of Organizational Development? And the answer is no, we actually don't. Glenn Kramoff is here as an interim director. He's been with us since about 2016, and his title is Director of Organizational Development. He has been assigned over that period of time a number of divisions and departments to help with restructuring, long-term planning, and the like. He is just wrapping up some work he's been doing with Public Works, and when our Admin Services Director position was vacated, Glenn stepped up to take on the City Clerk's Office, which involves a number of things, including records management, and he's also taken on technology. So we thought it was important to report out on the work that Glenn is doing, so Glenn, I'll turn it over to you.
There we go. Good evening. We had to call it something, so that's why we called it that. And then you make me follow Public Works, they get to do all the cool stuff. At least I don't have to follow Parks, who does all the fun stuff, so. So, yeah, we kind of put this group together. It consists of the City Clerk Team, which is, all of you know really well, and they've been a longstanding group. And then we've put the Technology Team together that consists of GIS, the Web Team, and Information Technologies. Putting them all together for, because they all do similar things, and it's the first time in city's history we've been able to do that. So highlighting a couple of accomplishments for the City Clerk, we'll start with them. Wanted to highlight the passport conversion. This is a great example of efficiency, effectiveness, and innovation. I think we've cut the staff time, I don't have the hours, but it's, it's really significant. The big thing too is also we've increased the customer service, which our customers have really enjoyed. And what, the big part of this that was innovative is putting, believe it or not, is putting the scheduling online so people could schedule. We thought, I know the team thought when they started that, well, everybody should be doing that. Well, they found out they're the first. So we have a lot of cities interested in talking to us on how we did it. So I think that was a huge success. We have, I think you've experienced some of the iCompass conversion, which is, I would say, still underway. say, still underway, and we have a lot of new pieces to add throughout the next 18 months or so, but we feel it was a large success. We have a couple of things that we're currently working on. One is the Agenda Packet Improvement Process, which we're having someone come in on the lean process and walk us through our process, see what we're doing well and what we're not, and looking to improve that. The iCompass process has really helped with that. Just bringing that system in has really identified some challenges for us, and we've been able to fix a number, but we know there's a big opportunity there. And then I wanted to highlight the grant. We're working with the state to get a grant to work on records management, which we'll talk about a little bit more in a later slide, but that should be a three-phase grant, and you'll see the grant process when we hopefully get the money. So I also wanted to highlight a couple of things throughout this presentation that we're going to be bringing back to you for you to consider or to present some options for you. One of them is the records request policy. Needs to be updated. We want to be able to balance our resources, our request, our requesters' needs, as well as being transparent in government, which is one of the council goals for this year in 2018. We also need to plan for succession. Melanie is our first and only City Clerk in the city's history, and eventually she's going to go on to something else, so we want to be able to plan for her departure. So on to the Technology Team. I mentioned about the GIS and the Web Team and IT all coming together. We have put them together over the last six weeks and with some really nice results. They have a lot of skills that overlap and where we can leverage those skills to utilize them in each of the different areas, and we've started to do that. We've also been able to identify where the gaps are. There are a total of two GIS people, one Web Team member, and two IT. We also supplement Web with an intern, and we supplement IT with a contract employee. So that's a total of seven doing all of this work. And as you know, we have a gap analysis underway on the, to assess all of the needs for technology, and we have currently, they've already finished assessing all of our hardware, and they're currently now meeting with staff, finding out the needs, the lacks, and those sort of things. So a report will be coming pretty soon. That's another action item for council. We will present the report with the recommendations that go with that, and that will lead into some budget discussions, I'm sure. I also wanted to highlight the IT, or the GIS Strategic Plan, which is also in process. They're actually now in the process of finalizing the report, so we should see a draft report really soon, and we'll also be sharing that with you with recommendations as well. And number nine, I wanted to also highlight the Web Update. That is something that the council has with the Communication Strategic Plan. The council set aside significant money to update the website, so we've undertaken that process. We have made the decision, we created a team, an internal team, and we made the decision to look at what's out there before we do a request for proposals. So we're in that part of the process where we've got people doing some demos and showing us what they can do, so we can write a really clean RFP and make sure we get what the city needs. We'll go through the RFP process, we'll choose someone, and then we'll start the process of updating. I think the real piece is to tie that to our current branding effort that is underway, so we want to make sure they're on consistent paths. In the near future, we are taking on a number of enterprise system updates. Trackett has an update coming in '19. Spring Brook Replacement, that's our financial system. Tracking System needs to be replaced. The city isn't on Office 365 yet. That's something that we're going to start working on in the next 60 days or so. We're also working on an Internet update, Intranet update. We don't have a great storage system that we can all utilize within the city, so we're looking to do that so that we can be efficient and have everything in one place and fully So a couple of things that I've been focused on. I recently finished up the Maintenance and Operations work. That had been ongoing. That's what brought me here originally. And we have now fully completed the transition of the three divisions to their appropriate director. So the Parks Team is now working fully for the Parks Director. The Public Works Group that Public Works showed is now fully transitioned there. And then we have an Internal Services Team that now works for Jesse in the City Manager's Office. That was very, very successful, and there's always bugs, but I think they're all doing fantastic work. And then a couple of weeks ago, we did a Public Works Workshop, which was kind of my, kind of finishing up my work and encouraging the rest of the Public Works Team to move on with theirs, and they did a fantastic job, and they've, they made some really nice changes on how they do business, and it become really effective. And part of my role is to work myself out of a job, and I did that, and they're on to do bigger and better things. So I have a number of things that I'm involved in. I'm not necessarily leading all these efforts. A number of these will be coming towards you eventually. The Employee Manual Update will be coming to see you soon. The Class Comp Study will also be coming to you soon. I'm working with City Manager's Office on that. There's a committee on the Employee Manual Update. And then I wanted to highlight also the Integrated Pest Management Committee. That is an internal committee we formed to look at how we handle use of chemicals within the city, and that's just internally. And so we've been drafting up a policy and working on being a little more environmentally friendly, so we will show that to you when we're, when it's ready. And then in the near future, I mentioned the gap analysis for the budget process. Deputy City Manager Vaughn mentioned the Administrative Services Department. You know, we're in a, we're kind of in a flux and trying to figure out what we're going to do and what's best for the city and the staff in that realm, and I'll be working with that. That goes along with the third one, where we're updating organizational charts, not only the way we want to, the way that we're doing them, but getting them where we want to be, how we want to be operating. You'll see a lot of that work in the budget process. And then one of the final things that I've got on my list that we haven't started yet is an employee development program. That's something that is clearly near and dear to all of senior leaderships hard, and we have some great staff, and we want to be able to keep them and keep them growing. With that, any questions?
You must have done such a great job, no one has any questions.
Well, I think, in closing, I think that's what this department really does. We stay in the background. We support everybody else's success, and we enjoy when they're succeeding, knowing we had a part of it, so, thank you.
Thank you, Glenn. Does the council want to take a break here for a few minutes before, yes, before diving into stormwater, which I don't anticipate to be a short discussion? Good, okay, so we'll take a five-minute break. All right, I'm going to call us back to order here. Our next order of business is, is it a presentation? Yes, it's a presentation, the Planning Efforts for Regional Stormwater Management in the Sammish Town Center. Ms. Deputy City Manager.
Yes, thank you. Kelly Hildy is here tonight. She's our Planning Manager in the Community Development Department, and Tawny Delzil is here. She's our Stormwater Program Manager as well. And our purpose tonight is to walk you back through, not all the way, the highlights of a presentation we gave last year, just re, kind of explaining the scope of this project. We are getting very close to issuing an RFP to hire a consultant to come onboard and work with us on the regional stormwater plan. Before we do so, we wanted to make sure this council, several of you are new, are fully up to speed on this project, so I will turn it over to Kelly and Tawny.
Well, thank you very much, and thank you for having us here tonight. As Deputy City Manager Vaughn mentioned, we are here to provide a review of the project background, recap of our feasibility analysis that was completed last spring, introduce regional stormwater strategic planning, and really what our next steps are moving forward. The city has a 10-year commitment with the Town Center. This started with the adoption of the Town Center Plan in 2008. This plan specifies policies that address the need for regional stormwater planning with the goal of utilizing green building techniques such as low-impact development, or LID, to minimize environmental impacts. Shortly thereafter, in 2010, Town Center Plan interim stormwater development standards were adopted. These policies led to the development of some particular goals, including supporting the sustainability of the Town Center, the environmental sustainability of the Town Center Plan, preserving the natural resources, provide opportunities for innovative environmental management techniques, and encourage green building design and construction. In 2011, plans were completed for the Thompson and Inglewood sub-basins, which actually divide the Town Center subarea. And in 2016, City Council and staff worked to develop implementation strategies to support the development of the Town Center. This work identified the need to hire a consultant team to assist the city in further studying the feasibility of regional stormwater. In late 2016, City Council adopted the Sammish Stormwater and, Stormwater and Surface Water Management Comprehensive Plan, the 2016 King County Stormwater Design Manual, and amendments to the LID code, amendments to the LID code. How those updates impacted Town Center planning, there are a few. First and foremost, 100% of developed areas must use LID when feasible. Previously, it was between about 60 and 80%. Cost was no longer a feasibility criteria, meaning if a developer was proposing a project in a site, that LID would actually work, and then came to the city and said, this is actually going to be too expensive for us to move forward, we would say, too bad, so sad, you actually have to use LID measures. So that was updated in 2016 as well.
Kelly, do we actually say too bad, so sad?
I do believe that's in the code. Bio-retention and permeable pavement are allowed within parking lots. If a deciduous tree is removed, it must be replaced with a mixture of coniferous and deciduous trees, and using LID site planning principles in practice can actually qualify a project for bonus density.
Sorry, we have a question up here. Councilmember Stewart.
When we say permeable pavement is allowed, would we rather say it's encouraged? I mean, I know this is what's been adopted, but just curious why we say it's allowed. Was it previously not allowed? And wouldn't that be something we'd want to have?
Yeah, the previous code in the Storm, in the Town Center did not specifically allow for permeable pavement or bio-retention. It had medians and asphalt as the requirements for paving and asphalt. So we updated that based on our requirements to encourage low-impact development.
And in 2017, just this last spring, we completed our work on the Town Center Regional Stormwater Facility Study. And actually, Tawny here shortly will provide an overview of that work. At the end of 2017, just recent, recently, City Council and staff completed its work on updating the stormwater rate model. Council decided at that time to remove future capital funding from the rate model for Town Center infrastructure and instead allocate funds in the biannual budget for regional stormwater planning. They also allocated $25,000 to be added to professional services to update the stormrate model once we had a better idea with this planning project, what those future investments would look like.
Yeah, I actually, I'm sitting here scrolling through, because you had mentioned something on the previous slide. Yeah, it might be one more before that.
There you go.
Okay, maybe one more. So our deck, our deck is not in the same order yours is, which had me just kind of scrolling, and I was like, wait, what's this? So I wanted to get a little bit of clarification and edification for the body, because we're saying 100% of developed areas must use LID when feasible. Later on in our slide deck, which is why I was scrolling, they're, based on the till soil, LID, full LID is not going to be used. So I think understanding what LID and when it's feasible, when we're talking about till soil, is important for the council to understand. So maybe you guys can talk a little bit about that. There was some, you know, at one point, we had talked about, you know, 100% retention, then we lowered that. I know the LID code kind of altered what that percentage looks like, so maybe you guys can speak to that a little bit?
Absolutely, and I'm actually going to defer to my partner in crime, Tawny.
So back in 2010, 2011, when we were developing the Town Center code, we wanted to be the leading edge in low-impact development, and so we didn't have regional requirements to, say, a developer had to implement LID in a development. What we did back then was we had a code that said, you must meet or retain 60% of the volume of stormwater on your site. So you can't discharge more than 60% of the stormwater that you create off your site. And there, it got changed from 60 to 80 in different areas. The Thompson Basin had an 80% requirement, more strict than, the Inglewood Basin had a 60% requirement. And then until then in 16, when we adopted the new regional requirements for low-impact development, that trumped everything and said, you can't just do a percentage, you have to look at all of your developed areas to see where it's feasible to implement low-impact development. What, what you're unclear about is what's the definition of feasible? So before, one of the definitions of feasible was cost. We said if a developer could show that they couldn't proceed with their development using LID because of the cost, that was an acceptable criteria to say, okay, fine. But now, cost is not a criteria. Some criteria include if you have poor soils. If you have glacial till there, then you can't do one of the LID techniques, which is infiltration, but there are others where you can limit impervious surfaces, you can disperse to vegetated areas, you can retain trees on the site. So there are other LID techniques in which can be used. Going back to infiltration, if you have poor soils, you're not going to get full infiltration, but you'd be able to, be able to get some limited infiltration. You may be able to do permeable pavement or bio-retention systems throughout your site, but if you have glacial till, you're likely not going to get that 100% of the stormwater on your site going into the ground. Does that help?
Yeah, and so then they would revert to some type of traditional retention or detention?
Yes, and they would have to, yes.
Good, thanks.
I'll scroll through here really quick. And as promised, I'm actually going to turn this over to Tawny again, and she's...
And as promised, I'm actually going to turn this over to Tawny again, and she's actually going to give you a recap of the feasibility analysis that we just completed this last spring.
So about a year ago, we gave you an update on the feasibility analysis that was conducted for regional stormwater in the town center. And the purpose of that was to evaluate whether regional stormwater was viable, a way of managing stormwater within the town center. We started out with some case studies that we reviewed. We followed that up with some preliminary site evaluation and then some actual conceptual site planning. So just stepping back a little bit, kind of defining what is regional stormwater. So really, it's a system in which stormwater is managed, stormwater runoff is managed, from multiple parcels, multiple properties, multiple sites in one centralized location. And often, development assists in the financing of the facility. And then there are some requirements for onsite privately operated facilities, I'm sorry, requirements for these separate onsite privately operated facilities can be reduced or eliminated because we're trying to centralize these regional facilities. And then as a reminder, some of the advantages of regional stormwater. One, most important, is improved water quality. Because we will have a higher assurance of the maintenance on these facilities, we can have a greater assurance that we'll have the water quality treatment that these facilities are designed to do. We'll also have a reduction in long-term maintenance and operating costs. Because these facilities are well-sited, they can serve as recreational amenities or public outreach opportunities. And then finally, we can ensure that there's that continuity that we want in the town center neighborhood and character. And then what are some of the disadvantages? Timing is one. We've got to time this in conjunction with development that is happening in the town center. There may be some upfront capital costs that the city may have to provide that we would look at recouping, either in latecomers or in additional connection fees. There would be some land acquisition that would be needed, and because of that, we would have to coordinate with multiple property owners. And then some of the models that we looked at regionally, the city of Bothell has a fantastic channel through one of their main downtown corridors. It's an open channel, and what it does is it provides a direct discharge to the Samamish River. It was a cost of $18 million. There were some increases in local utility rates for it, and also increases in the connection charges to development. And there was about a 50% recoup of the city's cost in this project. We also spoke with the city of Redmond. They have a very large tension vault underneath the Sears parking lot in the Overlake District. Their cost was $30 million, but this project was entirely recouped by private development. And then finally, we spoke with the city of Issaquah, with their development within the Isquah Highlands. Their regional facilities were entirely paid by one developer who was developing the Highlands. And they had multiple facilities, but what was unique about them was that they were able to co-locate them in recreational park open spaces. And then what we asked all of these jurisdictions was, "What did you learn when you were trying to implement regional stormwater facilities within your communities?" First thing is, they wanted us to make sure that we established a clear vision for regional stormwater with support from our city council, which is what we did last year and what we're continuing to do with this project. Two, they said, "You need to anticipate that regional stormwater will attract new development." The city council tasked us to be a leader in planning for regional stormwater, and through that leadership and through implementation and planning, new development should come to the town center. The facilities need to be designed so that they can be retrofitted and upgraded in the future to meet future stormwater regulations. And we also should understand that anytime you build a large regional facility, they're going to have some special design requirements. They could have dam safety requirements, they could have very large conveyance pipes that are needed for their discharge. And then some of the site information we have is that, this is a depiction of the town center divided into two very important sub-basins within the city. There are the headwaters to George Davis and Ebray Creek. From some of the preliminary soils work that, where they've investigated some geotechnical reports that have been done for developments in the area, the soil configuration is primarily till within the town center. As I said, there's pretty poor infiltration characteristics with till soils, so it's not entirely conducive to full infiltration. I understand that there was some discussion about infiltration within the Samamish Community and Aquatic Center, and how the glacial till soils here were not conducive to full infiltration. Yet, we have pervious pavements, yet we have a water re-harvesting system and dispersion systems here. In other areas in the town center, we're going to need to take borings in the locations where we cite these regional facilities. And those geotechnical borings will give us information on the more specific geotechnical soils information on those sites. So some of the existing facilities, just real quickly, that we have right now include the ones that you see here. And then, this is a map showing what stormwater facilities might look like if we didn't have a regional stormwater facility plan in place. You'll see that there's multiple facilities in the city. The facilities kind of take up a lot of the area of the town center, so they will impact the overall town center character. There will be increased maintenance and operation costs, and oftentimes, it's difficult to enforce compliance of the maintenance standards. And then this is a layout of, conceptual layout, of where the feasibility analysis thought that regional town center could be located. And you'll notice that we only did the western portion of the town center with the feasibility analysis. But what we've done was we've cited these facilities to try to optimize the rest of the town center landscape. And as I said, it'll reduce overall operation and maintenance costs, and we should have better site integration of these facilities. And then we got into a little bit more detail with the feasibility analysis. We divided the town center up into six proposed basins, including the Greenspine. We analyzed A, B, and C. And then the feedback that we received from the city council at that time was, they'd like us to have some future planning efforts for other basins, D and E, within the town center.
And actually, this is a slide that was added today to show these conceptual layout of the detention facilities that were cited as part of the feasibility analysis. They are overlaid onto a property ownership map, and more specifically, property that is either under contract or owned by STCA are vintage. And really, the intent here is to show that three of these facilities, the facility in the Samamish Commons and the Greenspine facilities, are located on current public property, or future public property. The Greenspine will be a public amenity within the town center. The facilities A and C are actually located in town center residential zones. So it gives a little bit of context to these facilities being designed to blend in with that residential setting. They're also located next to known critical areas. And so the intent is, as we continue planning and looking at those partnership opportunities, is that we work with our development community with these regional facilities and identify a design program that, again, blends these within that current residential fabric as planned with the town center. So at the end of our feasibility analysis, we asked two questions of the city council at the time. And the first question is, should the town center team continue to study and keep open the possibility of implementing regional stormwater facilities where opportunities become available with private development? Overwhelmingly, we heard yes. Would the city like staff to further explore financing options to support public-private partnerships for regional stormwater? And again, overwhelmingly, yes. As Tawny mentioned, this council would, at that time, directed staff to take a leadership role in this planning process, and that is what this will look like.
Kelly, can I just add? I want to be clear. The council's direction was for the city to lead the design efforts, not to allow a developer to lead and us to support the development. So we are in the lead for doing the regional stormwater planning. Certainly, we have a number of partners, including the development community, so I just wanted to make that clear.
Thank you. So what is a regional stormwater strategy? So a regional stormwater strategy is a planning document, and in our case, will serve as a roadmap for development of co-located stormwater and park facilities. The purpose of this planning document is to define the project goals and objectives, to establish key policies, to provide a conceptual design that integrates co-located facilities within the town center sub-area. This will require a lot of site studies and review of design alternatives, not only with our council and our commissions, but with our partners and the public. This strategy will also provide regulatory analysis and recommendations, develop a financial plan that further describes the public-private partnership, so having those discussions with the development community, and produce a phased project implementation strategy. And to help guide all of this work, we will have a very robust community and stakeholder engagement process. And that's not just working with our citizens, but also with our partners, Samamish Plateau and Water, with internal stakeholders, environmental groups, our town center developers and property owners, city council, of course, and working this plan through review with our parks and our planning commissions. And again, we touched on this a little bit before, but there are a lot of benefits to co-located facilities. Again, enhanced wildlife, corridors and habitat, air quality, water quality, and opportunities for recreation. And it's also important to note that this really is visualized as part of our comprehensive plan, and more specifically, within our capitals facilities chapter, the desire to co-locate facilities with planning projects such as this. And, you know, this is, we seem to be in a two-year cycle of planning, so there is a lot of coordination with existing adopted plans, but also plans that are currently in the process of review, including our transportation master plan and our urban forest management plan. And I am embarrassed to say that the urban forest management plan wasn't originally on your slide deck, and that's one of our department's projects, so I apologize for that. David Goodman may not forgive me. So looking forward, as our deputy city manager mentioned, we are expected to finalize and release our RFP next week. We will review qualification proposals and set up interviews in May. In June, we will hope to have a consultant selected and start negotiating a contract. And again, we hope to bring back a contract for your review here in June, so we can get that consultant onboard and starting to get going on this very important environmental work in July. So with that, if you'd like to answer any questions?
Kelly, can I just jump in here, too? I want to make sure I mention, when we presented this, we had a couple of different discussions with the council previously. One of the primary concerns was, "How much is this going to cost, and what's our share going to be?" And at the time, the answer was, "We don't know yet." It really, we need to do the study to get into design. So what I want to assure you is that those decisions have not yet been made. Those are going to be decisions that we'll ask you to make and help guide us on those strategies in the coming year, likely into 2019. And there may or may not be a city share, that's a decision we need to make. If there is a city share, then that item that Kelly mentioned previously, the $25,000 to update the stormwater rate study, would allow us to go back and update the stormwater rates to reflect a future investment for stormwater in town center. So I just wanted to walk back through. We have not made any commitments yet. That's what we're going to be doing with this study.
Mine's more just a comment. I love the focus and the emphasis on the environmental impacts, not just stormwater, but I think that projects like these can have so many benefits, and that, I know we talked in our retreat, that we wanted to see kind of environmental be something that we look at. So I really love that, and I really hope that we can really see a lot of the fruits of that kind of a labor, that we can see reduction in temperatures, and we can see, you know, more environmental sustainability in projects like this. So I think that's great. Thanks.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Okay, so do we want to continue and do council reports, or do we want to circle back on the council committees at this point?
Let's do council reports.
Okay. Let me get back to my agenda here on here. I'm not going to read my report since you have it there, but I will give one additional item. I called in today to a...
I'm sorry.
Yep, go ahead.
We skipped that resolution we added to new business.
Oh, that's right, that's right.
Thank you so much, Lita.
Oh, yeah, it's under new business, that's right. Thank you, Lita, for redirecting us. So you have a paper copy of an agenda bill up here on the dais. This is the resolution sponsoring Samamish Plateau Water and Sewer Districts' request to join the AWC Employee Benefit Trust. Ms. WCVB manager, do you want to give us just kind of an overview?
Well, first of all, my apologies. It appears this request came in sometime last week, and we had a miscommunication internally, so I was not aware of it. But essentially, Samamish Plateau Water is looking at alternatives for benefits for their employees. Association of Washington Cities does allow non-cities to participate in the benefit program, provided they have a city sponsor. So this resolution is simply our sponsorship of SAM plat for this effort. We don't have any further obligations beyond this action tonight.
Are there any questions? Councilmember Valdrama.
Yes, just, I'm curious, will the same opportunity exist for the Northeast Water District? And if so, should we make a motion for both to take place now, even though one may only opt to take advantage of it?
They may desire to reach out to us in the future. This resolution is specific to SAM plat.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, just to clarify, when we say sponsorship, it really just means like, hey, we vouch for them, they're good guys, kind of thing? Like, there's no other obligation or responsibility?
That's correct.
All right, just making sure. Thanks.
Okay, entertain a motion.
I move that the city of Samamish sponsor the Samamish Plateau Water and Sewer Districts' request to join the AWC Employee Benefit Trust.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? I'm seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Seven zero, the resolution passes. Okay, now we can move on to... Okay, now we can move on to those council committees. I don't know if, I have, I wrote down the list as Jesse was talking, so I don't know if council just wants me to go through them one by one and we can walk through them. The first one I have on the list is...
Wait, I thought we were going to do council reports.
Oh, do you want, okay. Sorry. I think the only thing, the only other note I was going to give on my council report was, I called into a meeting today regarding the Kokoni, and just, I don't know if this is something that's been, I assume it's been talked about in the Kokoni work group, and I think that's, is that you, Karen? Because of the dwindling numbers of the Kokoni, they're looking at trying to recreate them, essentially. And they're working very quickly to try and come up with something, a call that I came into today. They have a funding gap in order to have this like hatchery program. I think what I heard was a $29,000 gap, and so there'll likely be an ask from Samamish and Issaquah, potentially. You know, they asked me my opinion. I said, I can't, you know, profess to speak for six other people, but maybe it might be helpful for the council when it comes to budget to hear exactly what this program is that they are looking at doing in an effort to help save the Kokoni.
Question, will there also be an ask for Redmond and Bellevue, since they're also part of the Samamish, Lake Samamish?
It's possible.
But they do not mention, call them out specifically?
No, not specifically, no. And then, the rest of my report is there for y'all to read. So, we'll start down at the end. Councilmember Ritchie, do you have a report?
No report.
Councilmember Moran?
No report.
Councilmember Valdroma?
Yes, I had attended the Eastside Fire and Rescue Leadership Meeting. There's going to be more updates on the PFOS issue for the next meeting, but not on this one. I attended with councilmember Moran, councilmember Stewart, and Mayor Malchow, the Lake Washington School District Public Safety. I think what's interesting about that, the initial, and maybe it's because of the marches and all, that there was very little turnout, both in Kirkland and in Samamish for those public safety awareness discussions. And so, it was a great presentation. Unfortunately, there weren't more people there to adhere to that. I also had attended Citizens for Samamish yesterday, and the extravaganza, which was actually phenomenally well-done, so I have to give credit to the city, and particularly the Y who was running it. That was really excellent. One request here on, from me during the council reports, that I would like the Governance Committee to go back and come back to us. There were discussions earlier made during the retreat, and to come back with guidance on social media and seeing how are we dealing with the social media and pages, and is the council going to get specific guidance on how to deal with both closed groups and open groups?
There's, we had that discussion, and I think we were waiting to schedule that meeting, but that got hung up with the deputy mayor's pulling himself off of several committees.
The policy is drafted and ready to go to governance.
So we just need to set the committee date.
Okay, because we still have that committee. That should...
It is. Yep, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Ross?
Nothing to report this night.
Councilmember Stewart?
I don't have a report, but one of the things that, for those of us who did attend the Lake Washington School District Safety, I'm wondering if we could help the school districts with some of the communication, right? There were a lot of questions around not knowing, like, some of the numbers that you could call in with information and things like that. So, I'm just wondering if that's something we could work to use our city communications to help get that word out, since it seemed like a lot of people were unaware of that information, so.
I think that's something, you know, we can talk to Kelly Stickney, potentially.
I would be happy to follow up.
Okay. Great. Thanks.
No report.
No report? Well, that makes it easy. Okay. All right.
And I have no report as well.
Sorry, I almost forgot you, Tom.
Out of sight, out of mind.
That's why, that's why I thought I'd chime in, yeah.
Okay. Now, we'll contend with the council committees. Do you want me to just go through them as I've written them down, or how do you want to tackle this? I don't...
Yes.
Great. Okay. So, I'll start off with Eastside Fire and Rescue, which, there's kind of a package deal there. So there's the EFOR Board itself, and then there's the FAC Committee. It doesn't necessarily have to be the same person, it just has to be somebody sitting on the board, which, so I'm looking at Councilmember Valdroma, because you're also sitting on the board currently.
I'm already on the board.
I know. But you could serve on the FAC as well. I'm just putting it out there that it could be one of the two board members, but it needs to be a board member, board member that serves on the FAC.
I'm sorry? They have a pretty good lunch. Yeah, I can hit lunch anyways, because I go for the leadership meeting afterwards.
Okay. So, does anyone have interest in filling that position?
I do, since I've been doing the alt, but then somebody would have to be the alt.
We would need somebody to serve as alternate.
Yes, I'd like to go from alt to the board, but then somebody would have to fill the alt.
Okay. So is there somebody interested, is there anyone else interested, I should say, in serving on Eastside Fire and Rescue? Nope. Okay. So can we agree? Well, okay, so we'll deal with that. What about FAC? Are you going to...
FAC is why I've been doing that as well.
Okay. So Jesse or Mike, do we need to package this up as a formal motion, or we just simply assign?
I was actually reviewing your council rules earlier, and there's no specific procedure called out, so simple assignment would work.
Okay. Perfect. So Jesse, are you keeping track? Wonderful. Thank you. Okay. So, we need someone who serves as alternate, then, for Eastside Fire and Rescue.
Your alternate.
Okay. So we've got Chris Ross. Is there anyone else that's interested in serving? Okay. You guys are making this really easy. Finance.
Finance Committee?
Mm-hmm.
I'll step into that.
Okay. Jason, is there anyone else interested? All right. Done with that. The EMS levy, and then, Tom said he also serves on a subcommittee. I don't know that, and Tom, maybe you can chime in here. I don't know if necessarily if we put somebody on that EMS levy, if they necessarily have to assume that subcommittee role as well. Tom, do you have any comment on that?
I think everybody on the task force is expected to serve on at least one subcommittee. I chose finance, given our role as the first time of sitting at the table. They could choose a different subcommittee, but I think there is an expectation. You can serve on more than one, too. There are actually three, if I'm not mistaken, subcommittees.
Okay. Is there anyone interested in serving on that EMS?
Can you repeat for me what the...
I've got them.
Schedule is?
The dates are 4/26/31, October 16th. They're from 1:00 to 3:00 at rotating locations.
The Finance Committee was April 19 at 1:00 p.m.
I'm sorry, what was that?
The Finance Committee.
Committee?
He said was April 19 at 1:00 p.m.
Okay. I can take that.
Is there anyone else that's interested in serving on the EMS levy? We've got Karen in there.
Can I confirm that EFOR alternate is...
Chris.
Councilmember Ross.
Yes. Okay. Then we have the ARCH Board, which is ad hoc. Tom, can you give us an idea of location and timing? I know you said it's ad hoc, but traditionally, is there a location and...
It's usually in Bellevue. Jason, I don't think we've had a meeting on the ARCH Committee yet, and it's usually only about once a year, and Lyman will attend that typically as well.
Okay. Is there anyone interested in ARCH?
No one. I'm on the, newly on the Joint Recommendations Committee, which kind of fits a little bit with ARCH, so if there's no others, I don't know, anybody, I'll back away on others interested, but I can take that on if no one else volunteers.
I can certainly volunteer as well, but I won't fight you for it. Okay. You've already stepped in. Okay. So I will do the ARCH Board. Governance, he said he was going to stay on, and I think that takes care of everything. No, no Finance. We have the Finance Committee.
We did that already.
Oh, that's right.
Sorry. Got it. Done.
Chrissy, that was you on ARCH?
Yes.
That was painless.
It was painless. Okay. Let's see. City manager report now. So we do have an executive session, potential litigation pursuant to RCW 42.30.110.1i. I would anticipate probably at least an hour.
And Jesse, just to confirm, you will call me back?
Yes, I will.
All right. Thank you.
That would be interesting if they called from over here.